Here. All right. Matt, if you would, maybe just kind of give us the background, a little bit of background about who you are, what brought you to this and kind of why you've decided to run for council and run at this particular time?
Okay, yeah, awesome. I so I moved into Dubuque about 11 years ago for college. So I'm a graduate of Lawrence College with an accounting and finance degree. Right before senior year, decided to stay in Dubuque, so made that decision relatively early from a college perspective. As I had a job offer to go work full-time at AY McDonald's where I interned in the finance department for two years prior. So I just fell in love with Dubuque during college and wanted to make it my home. Why I'm running, you know, I since leaving the accounting finance career, I started into real estate operations and management. So I own a small business. I, you know, work day in and day out on numbers and finances and timelines. And I started going to city council meetings. And just quite honestly, I did not see a lot of arguments going on and maybe arguments is the bad word, but a lot of back and forth on decisions they were being make. I didn't understand why decisions were being made and really just wanted to be, you know, a good voice with that finance and accounting background and a small business ownership that I think can really help push Dubuque forward.
When was that that you started to go to council meetings?
Yeah, I started probably in 2020. Going to virtual ones during COVID and then started regularly going, I've probably, I've probably been to almost 30, you know, since I started really being invested in the future of Dubuque. But, you know, whether it's joining online or going in person, I just like to know what's going on in the community, especially running a business here. I think it's important to know. Know all the ins and outs.
And how long were you at AY before you started going out on your own business?
Yeah, so I was at AY McDonald's for five years and then I worked at Cartograph and then Open Gov who acquired Cartograph for two years in their financial planning department.
Okay, and, and I know, so you own a lot of rental properties and that sort of thing here in Dubuque, is that correct?
Yeah, so I own my own portfolio that I bought between 2019 and 2023, self-managed those. And then I have also about a year and a half ago started a third-party property management business. Where we have about a total about 165 units under management between Dubuque County and Davenport.
Okay, well, obviously, housing is a huge issue here and I'm sure you have a unique perspective. I'd be curious to hear what what you think about the city's approach to, to addressing a housing shortage. Is that, is there a housing shortage, I guess, and how do you feel about the way that's being addressed? And also, if you can talk about some of the obstacles, maybe that, that you think is the city, I know you, you've had some criticism of the city and some of the obstacles thrown up in the way of, of those kinds of developments.
Yeah, so, so number one, do we have a housing shortage? That's a good question. I personally don't see that as a main, main problem now. Only because in my experience, and I've been doing this for, you know, five and a half years now. Our days on market for rentals are up, meaning it's taking longer to rent apartments. And that's in any area of the city. So that's one thing that concerns me when the city talks about the need for more apartments. Just the longer time to lease up. The other thing I'd say is a lot of the development that's going on, people quite honestly aren't happy with how it was planned and where it's going. So I'm obviously running city council for Ward Three, where we have the new housing development harbor at the Union going down on Kerper. And I've knocked 494 doors as of last night in my ward, talked about 150 of those have answered. And basically, a number one concern right now in my ward is that housing development. You know, it's being built in a food desert, the sidewalk's not extended down that far, the jewel is not even extended down that far right now. So I just think a lot of the housing developments that come up to help provide more housing are poorly planned upfront and we just need better planning processes.
Well, you know, I've heard that criticism before regarding the food desert issue. To what extent, I guess, do you think that is an issue in Ward Three in general? And is there something that, that the city or city council can do to, or should be doing to address that?
Yeah, so, so it is an issue for the whole ward. There is not just that particular area. The only grocery store is Eagles. Down, you know, on Elm, which I shop there, it's a good team. But a lot of the people in my ward I've talked to walk to the store and that's their only option. You know, they don't want to drive over to Asbury or, or down to West, to Locust or Ivy on 20. So we do, the ward specifically is short on a lot of business amenities that the residents need, not just, you know, grocery stores, restaurants, small corner, corner shops, you know, Kramer's is obviously a great example of one that's thrived in Ward Three. But a lot of other empty commercial spaces are available that I think need some sort of city push for businesses to move into.
Okay, are there, are there areas that, that you think the city has provided incentives for, for housing or other developments that you think they maybe were misplaced or where would, where would you see, how would you spend that kind of put out those incentives to, to get some of the development you're talking about?
Yes, so there's two things that recently have happened. We have the Central Avenue revitalization where, you know, half of that's in my ward. And then you also have the apartments down on Kerper. The issue people see when I talk to them at their doors is, you know, a city-owned land. Other people, from what I've been told, have proposed other projects. And the city was waiting for the right housing development that they wanted. And they sold the land for just a little less than the city incentive they were getting. So people are a little annoyed that an out-of-state developer was given free land essentially. The other thing for the Central Avenue revitalization zone. When it originally came out, the project value had to be more than $500,000. And a lot of the buildings that, that I see and have talked to other building owners on, on Central Avenue. Their total project, including the building costs, is, you know, shy of that $500,000 limit. And the city's been easy to work with on figuring out how they can still take advantage of the incentive, but I think that disincentivized people at the beginning from even looking at what was available. So I think we just need a little more true transparency on what the city is willing to do and what they want out of a project. Big and small.
Mm-hmm, okay. Is there, is there, are there particular things about, you know, obviously you're running for Ward Three because it's the ward you live in. There's also was an at-large seat available. Was there a particular reason you were invested in, in going for a ward seat? Or any shortcomings or differences that would separate you and, and the incumbent?
Yeah, yeah, so very good question. You're actually the, only the second person that, that's asked me that and I've been doing this since May. I, so I've lived in Ward Three the whole time. I've been a full-time resident. I bought my house right before I graduated college and have been here since. I love my neighbors. I love the community I'm in. And the number one thing I've enjoyed most about running this campaign is talking to the people. And when I'm thinking ward-specific, though I'm talking to people outside of my ward, I'm able to knock on doors and actually talk to my neighbors. Whether that's my actual neighbors or people that live six blocks away. I've walked up and down Roosevelt, Romberg, Lincoln, name the street. I've been on it already. And that's the best thing, just having the smaller number of available voters. So I can really talk to as many as possible. Before election day, I'm going to knock on 1,200 doors. And based on our, I guess really my, my analysis, we're basically at a 32% answer ratio. So I'm literally talking to voters, seeing what they want out of me, and that's the best thing I think I can do.
Okay. Can you talk a little bit about Comiskey Park, one of the amenities that is in your neighborhood and some, I think we're, we're starting another phase of that project. How do you think that's gone over? How do you see that serving the neighborhood? Anything you would be doing differently there?
So I think it's a great park. I think they did a good job. I truly don't see it used a lot. You know, it's, it's in an area that's just not accessible to the whole city. And something that big, I think, needs to be more accessible. I, I think we need to work on fixing failing parks before we do more and Comiskey Park was obviously a great example of that. I don't know much about what part of their phase two. But I think there's other parks that need to be focused on as well, including Eagle Point Park. While they're doing that, I think it can't just be a one park at a time kind of solution.
Okay, going back to your comment about it being, not being accessible to the city, you mean?
Centrally located.
Okay, okay. And, and you don't see a lot of use by Ward Three residents?
I, I don't, I mean, yeah, I drive by it all the time. I have tenants down in the area. And I just, I don't, I don't hear or see much use of it, especially of the splash pad area and some of the, the things I think are great. I, I just think if it was more centrally located within the city, it would get much more use from everyone across the whole city.
And, and talk a bit more about, about Eagle Point Park. We've heard, you know, some criticism of what the city has done and some, some efforts for from the city to, to kind of shore up some of the concerns there.
Yeah, so you know, it's a beautiful 164-acre park right on the Mississippi. It was actually, quick story, when my parents and I came for my visit day at Loris. We went, we drove and walked through Eagle Point Park, which is something that I've always, you know, had in my mind for Dubuque. Obviously, I literally live a minute and a half away. I just, I love going there. I love walking through it. You know, the grass isn't well-maintained and they, and they were short-staffed, you know, I'm not saying the Parks Department wasn't, wasn't maintaining it. But even very simple things that could be done to make sure that the view of the river is unobstructed. To make sure that the buildings are, you know, in, in good repair. I was talking to a resident that was gonna host their mother's, I think it was 70th or 80th birthday party there. And she showed up the day before to look at the building and, and the, it doesn't look what it used to look like. We actually hosted a meet and greet for Ward Three residents there last Thursday. We had about 53 people come to, to meet me and Jason Davis, who's one of the mayoral candidates. And that's, that's the number one thing right now for people in the, in the ward. They want the park fixed. They want it to look like what it used to do and what it used to look like and just really want that view of the river to be unobstructed. I don't, I don't think those are very hard things to do. Some of the buildings up there, they're historic, beautiful buildings. I can't imagine there's not some sort of state or federal funding the city can work to apply for to do the rehabs they need. But it's really just fallen and disrepaired due to preventative maintenance not being kept up. And I know it's expensive to do that kind of stuff, but when I talk to people and that's what they want, that's what we have to make one of my priorities.
Okay, turn it over to my colleagues if somebody wants to jump in with another question.
I'll be happy to jump in. One of the things that has been kind of at the front of city council discussions here recently is funding of the Denver Air and the Dubuque, through the Dubuque Regional Airport. And I'm curious to your stance on whether the city should provide funding to help secure commercial air service out of Dubuque.
Yes, great, great question. So my, just to be clear, I 100% support commercial air service out of Dubuque. I have family, I have a niece and nephew down in Atlanta. I love going down to visit them. Dubuque makes it very convenient. I also have no issue subsidizing to a, an extent. The issue I see right now is I don't know when the incentive's supposed to end, how much is the max incentive? And really, what is the plan to get the airline utilization to the level where it is sustainable? But again, I love air service here. I've taken, I think, four, six flights out of it since Denver Air can expand here. But I need to know how long they need that subsidy and to what amount. I also think that it just needs to be budgeted during our regular budget time. If they need $1 million for two years in a row to, to get us to the point where it's self-sustaining, great, budget that at the beginning and just know that that's there. I don't think it should be something that we're coming back to a vote on after we've been invoiced for two months that based on the contract we're legally obligated to pay.
So, thank you for that. As a follow-up, would, would, if, if it takes 12 months of funding from the city to make that happen, would you support that? And I mean, what, you know, the number that they're talking about right now is $1.6 million to what, what do you feel is a fair amount to support from the city?
And that, that's a good question. I don't have a good answer for right now. I would need to know the plan to get to a level where it's sustainable. And right now, our, our usage and utilization is not there. I was on a flight where there were eight people. And it's kind of nice because it's like you're on a private jet, but, you know, it's from a financial standpoint, those seats cost money. I think there's an easy way to work with the airline and historic data from when we had American Airlines to see what travelers were traveling for and what we can do to increase that. I think if, if, you know, large business were to move to Dubuque, it might get a little more utilization. I said it before, it's kind of an interesting topic because you need air service to attract a big employer, but you also need a, you know, big employer to attract commercial air service. So to what level we subsidize it, I don't have a good answer for you on that. I would need to know more data on how they're going to work towards self-sustainability. I can't tell you when I talk to people at their door. I would say nine out of 10 people do not support the continued subsidy and it's really just because they don't understand the economics behind it and what that plan is. And I tell them, well, I don't really know what the plan is either. And, and I haven't seen any reports to say what they can do to get to that, what they say 80% utilization for self-sustainability. I don't know if that answered your question, because I really can't until I see how they're gonna move forward.
Okay, thank you. Go, Ally.
Oh, hello, yes. Sorry, I got distracted for just a second. Talk about the airport. Well, so one of the things that's going to be coming up in the next couple of years that's been announced is the upcoming retirement of Mike Van Milligan. And so the folks who are being elected there, the folks who are being elected now are going to be the folks who are going to be helping to pick that next person who will help be sort of the, the person running the day-to-day with the city. What, what would you look for in, in a new city manager? What, what kind of qualities do you think are important? What, you know, what direction would we be looking to go with the, the management of our city?
So I'll tell you, that's probably the number one question I get at Doors since he's announced his retirement date. Because it is, it's gonna be the most monumental hire that the next city council makes for, you know, a decade. It truly is. You know, I'd be looking for someone who, you know, demands accountability. I want to push for a, a good quality manager who has run an organization either similar or of same size to Dubuque. We need someone that's used to 100-plus million-dollar budgets, you know, a thousand employees. Plus, you're not only worried about employees, you're worried about, you know, 59,000 residents. You know, that need to hopefully like whoever we, we, we appoint to that position. And we're really, and I've said it two different ways, because you can go out and you can do a whole nationwide search and, and do it like anyone, any board of directors would do to hire a new CEO. But we also have a lot of good local talent and I, and I would love to see, you know, a Dubuqueer in there, because they know Dubuque best. But I'd be looking for someone that has run an organization of the same size, preferably governmental, but that might be, you know, a hard thing to do. If, if we do goal settings and we decide that we want to be 65,000, 70,000 residents in the next, you know, 10, 15 years. Maybe we go find someone that's been an assistant city manager or city manager in a city, you know, between the 60,000 and 100,000 and work with them on what we want to be and find the right person for that. But really just looking for someone that's run an organization with the budget size we have and, and has a true proven track record for completing capital projects on time. And, and hoping that we find someone that, that the public enjoys working with. Because really, it's not just a hire for the council.
Sure, I was gonna say, what kind of, you know, vision would you, would you want that person to have? I mean, you know, Mike Van Milligan's been in the, in the city for, I don't know, maybe as long as I've been alive. Okay, I, less, slightly less time than I've been alive. You know, and so he's kind of set the tone, set that direction. Would, would you want to see a city manager kind of continue on sort of the same track, the same direction that we've made? Would you want somebody who would, you know, maybe bring something a little bit different to the table, you know, what, 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 what kind of direction would you want that person to have?
I think we need a fresh outlook on the city, quite honestly, from both the, the council side and the management side. You know, and, and I've only lived in Dubuque for 11 years, but from what I've been told, you know, when, when Mike Van Milligan came on, the city was much different than it is and he's done a lot of great for the city. So we need to build on Dubuque's positives and, and really do goal settings with a new manager to figure out what works best for everyone. So I think a fresh perspective would be great. But again, we've had great successes in the city and we need to build on those and not forget about those.
Sure. You, you also mentioned briefly, you talked about, you know, sort of threw out there a goal around like, you know, growing Dubuque's population. Do you think that, that's, you know, what, what do you think population growth looks like? Do you think that should be, you know, a stronger goal or, you know, do, you know, do you think that we have kind of a, you know, decent-sized city as we are, you know, what, what do you see as Dubuque's goal as far as that population piece?
Yeah, I think we need to really start to grow our tax basis to basically increase economic development. I want to drive a good ROI for our taxpayers. And to do that, we need to have economic development. And by that, I mean new employers, new jobs, and with that would come population growth. I don't have a good answer for you on if that should be 5% a year, 10% a year, 2% a year. But I do know we do need to see growth, you know, just like any business, a growing business. And Dubuque's a phenomenal city. I chose to make it my home, you know, 10 years ago now, and I want people to feel the same. But I don't, I don't have a good answer for you on what that growth looks like, but I do think economic growth and increasing that tax basis is paramount to the success of Dubuque's future.
So as a follow-up to that, the Grided Dubuque Development Corporation has been working tirelessly on population growth. And we, we've not seen what I would call any significant movement, some movement, but not significant movement. What is it that you think you could bring to the table that is perhaps different than what others have been trying to accomplish to this point?
Yeah, I think from a, from a city council perspective, I've worked now for three, three businesses through strategic planning, through budgeting. In fact, I ran the budget for one company for their whole back office function. I, I think really it's, it's the financial aspect is what I can bring. And really, working with potential new business owners, as a small business owner, because really what, when, when they come here, when an employer's coming to look at Dubuque, I assume they're talking to other business owners. And, and right now you have large and small business owners that aren't, aren't very happy with how the city's operating. And I think that's a huge deficiency. So number one, we need to restore the, the trust existing Dubuque businesses have within the city and then use that to help attract new businesses.
Matt, I got a whole series of follow-ups for you here, so I'm just gonna go ahead and dig in. Let's go ahead and start with that last one. You talked about there's a whole lot of large and small businesses that are not happy with how the, the city is operated currently. Can you give us some, some specific concrete examples of that?
Yes, so number one, and it's, you know, near, dear to my heart, AY McDonald's building their new foundry, you know, right over, you know, eight minutes over, over into Wisconsin. That project, the public value of that project's $340 million. That's almost $10 million of future tax revenue that the county, school district and, and city lost. You know, that's future, you know, potential tax dollars there. And that, that's a tough one. I mean, that's, that's one of the largest economic developments this region's gonna see for, for years. And it's, you know, eight minutes right over the, right over the border. In fact, you can basically see it from Eagle Point Park. And, and that's just sad to see. You know, there's other, there's other smaller scale projects that I've just talked to people that are doing simple rehabs of properties that, you know, take more time than it should because they need to, you know, do X, Y, Z, and they're really not told why they need to do it. People, when I talk to business owners, again, big and small, they have no issue working with the city, but they want to know why and they want to know how they can take the no and get to a yes and what they need to do between that, you know, initial no to the final yes on a project.
And can you talk about some specifics on that? You, you mentioned earlier that that there were a number of people who had approached the city about building on that property where the, the new housing, the apartments are going in and they were told no. Can you talk specifically about who and, who and why?
Yeah, I, I, I can't. Only because, you know, what I've heard is, is what I've been told. I have not been told directly by a developer that they were told they couldn't do stuff there. So no, I don't have a good answer for that one on who, who exactly it was. But a lot of ideas have been floated by on that from people in my ward on what they wanted to see. Quite honestly, a lot of people would have loved to see luxury condos down there. I mean, it's right, it's prime riverfront property that now kind of has an eyesore of just traditional apartments.
Well, if I can just jump in, Bob, you know, there's, there's a lot of things that, if you knock on doors that people want to see in Dubuque. People want to see a Red Lobster. People want to see, you know, a 10,000-seat concert venue. But that doesn't necessarily mean that that's what developers are willing to come to the table with. And, and so, how do you balance that?
Yeah, so, so the, the issue that I see with that development is we, we don't see a major population growth. You know, from my, from my experience looking at my own business, if the days on market on rentals are up and then we're adding, you know, 200 units right there with no major job growth. So I just, I quite honestly don't know who's gonna be occupying those apartments when they're done. So you're right, the ideas people have, I haven't heard the Red Lobster from anyone for that area, but it, it's, people are concerned with an influx of population in that area with no real amenities around it. That's, that's the number one concern we have down there. And I don't think there's a lot of available land by that to build the amenities people want near an apartment complex. Whether, and, and no matter the use of the apartment complex, whether it's low-income or regular workforce housing, there's just really no amenities down there that they need.
Thanks. And Matt, you also mentioned that the money spent on, on Comiskey, you know, that it's not very accessible. Is there some way you think that Comiskey should be made more accessible?
When I said accessible, I meant just not centrally located within the city. So, so I can't pick it up and move it to the center, but, but I just think from, from the ability for everyone to use it. You know, people want to be closer. However, doing something like that would have further isolated the, the North End, which is another thing we hear a lot, that, that North End's kind of the forgotten, forgotten ward.
Getting back to the city manager hire, you mentioned how important it is and I, I think a lot of people agree with that. Do you have some specific, you talked about a lot of, you know, businesses wanting the city to do things differently. Is there some things that you'd be looking for a city manager to do differently than the current city manager? Do you have some specific examples of things that, that Mike Van Milligan has, has, or positions he's had or decisions he's made that you disagree with and would like to see different from a, a new city manager?
Well, I think it kind of goes back to my comment, we need to rebuild the trust between the business community and the city. And, and the next city manager is gonna need to be ready to work with business owners and, and regular, you know, Dubuqueers to, to get the goals across the, the finish line. I think two years ago, you had 23 of some of the most influential business owners send a letter telling the city that, you know, it's hard to run a business here. What are we gonna do to get there? And I don't think we saw much change after that. And though, and, and the people that sent that letter were, were, like I said, large influential business owners that want to invest here, want to continue to grow their business here and just find that there's too many red, you know, red, red tape to get a project across the finish line in the effective manner that they need for their business's ROI. Because at the end of the day, businesses, you know, need to have an ROI for their shareholders or their owners. Because at the end of the day, businesses, you know, need to have an ROI for their shareholders or, or their owners. Uh, and if you can go to a city that's much easier to work with or in, or you trust the person more or whatever it is, that's where you're gonna go because that's what you need to do for your business. I want to keep Dubuque business happy in here so that not only can we work on non-organic growth as in, as in bringing new employers in, but also to help our existing businesses have the organic growth that they need and, and can definitely do if we're able to increase the, the, the worker base for them.
And Matt, what does that red tape look like?
Yeah, I, I just think that you're, you're told to do things, you're not told why. Um, you know, from, from a housing standpoint, you know, uh, you know, you, you have no consistency with inspectors. So one inspector is gonna say this, the next one might say it's okay. Um, you know, I'd say building services are great to work with. Uh, and that, that's my experience and if I ask them why, they'll tell me. Um, but from talking to other business owners, they're just told do this and not given a reason. And nine times out of ten, they, they do it because they want to. Um, but you also just need to have that open communication with them from the beginning of, we need you to do this because X, Y, Z. Um, I just think businesses can handle challenges, but it just needs to be given to them upfront and told this is what it's gonna be and here's why.
Thanks.
A- as a council member, are there, um, are there specific uh, uh, kind of pieces that you would want to move forward? Um, perhaps regulatory changes or um, uh, other things within city code that you would like to see changed? That you think could move the needle on, on making, making more business owners uh, and, and developers happy?
Yeah, I just think, and, and I think the, like I said, the building services department does a great job. Um, I, I just think there needs to be a, a better expectation of timelines and when things are actually gonna get approved. Um, you, you know, even if you think about just how the city had recently set their goals, you know, one of their goals is, is a new sports complex development, uh, which people want. And, you know, we have people that travel all over Iowa for travel, for, for travel ball right now every weekend. Um, but what, what does that goal actually look like? Is it, they're just publishing a, a report on it? Are they actually gonna start talking to developers? Who are they gonna talk to? Where do they think it should go? I just think we have a lot of open-ended goals. Um, and, and that don't have a, you know, smart goal perspective behind it. Smart as in specific, measurable, achievable, relevant and, and time, time-bound. Um, I, I just think there's across the board, a lot of, of planning and ideas that have no uh, meat behind the bones.
Are there goals or priorities that the city has set in recent years that you think uh, shouldn't have been on there in the first place? Or m- m- maybe belong there, but were, went, have gone unmet?
Well, I think we've been talking about the sewer issue for, for a long time. Uh, and now, now, now we're at a, a, a position where we, we can't kick the can down the road any longer. Uh, you know, we, we've had the slow development, figured out ways to ha- have holding tanks so we can basically low flow into the sewer. Uh, I, I just think, a- and it's kind of the theme of, of everything I talked about. We have a lot of great projects, but we need more collaborative planning between the developer and the city. And we need smart objectives behind them all. Um, you know, they've also talked about air service for, for a while now. And like I said, a hundred percent support air service here, but there's really no, you know, commercial air, air service strategy. What is that? When are they gonna deliver that? Who's responsible for delivering that strategy? Because it can't just be the city, because we have a partner with Denver Air and we need to be working with them to figure out what we need to do.
And, and Matt, are you familiar with the group Dubuque Air?
I am. Yep, and, and I think again, it's, it's, it's great to have, you know, a group of, of, of business people talking about it. You know, and that's collaboration of, of some business leaders and, you know, city leaders as well as, um, I think Jason Way from Greater Dubuque Developments on it. Um, and, and that's great. And, and, you know, they have the collaboration between the city and Denver Air. Uh, but I've still yet to see a plan on how they're gonna actually keep and grow the use of, of commercial air service. Because quite honestly, people are, are okay driving, you know, an hour and a half right now. Uh, American Airlines left and people that relied on it found a different way to travel. Um, so we need to do something within the city to, to get them to want to fly out of Dubuque.
So, so just clarification, I, um, you, you're hearing people are okay with driving. I'm hearing people are okay because they're forced to, but it's not their preference.
I, yeah, when I, when I talk to people, uh, it, 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 it's, they're okay with it. I, I, you know, I, I obviously prefer to fly out of Dubuque, I love it. Um, people would rather have it here without having to pay one point six million dollars more. I think that's the number that scares people. It's not necessarily that they need to drive an hour and a half. Uh, it's, it's the cost associated from their tax dollars. Um, I've also talked to people that, you know, will drive fifteen hours for vacation. Um, right now, I think the air service is, is a little expensive. So if you're doing a, a, you know, a family vacation with five people, uh, and, and you have to spend an extra hundred, hundred and fifty dollars just to fly out of Dubuque for that convenience, that really adds up when you have more than one person traveling.
One other thing I wanted to get some clarification on, you had referred to a letter um, from twenty-three business leaders that said it was hard to do business in Dubuque.
Yep.
Um, um, if, maybe we're not thinking of the same letter, but I'm familiar with a letter that said it was hard for business development. I'm not, I was not familiar with one that said it's hard to do business in Dubuque. Can you expand on that?
Yeah, and I consider developing and, and expanding your business, doing business. C- because, because businesses need to continue to develop and, and grow to, to, to grow. And bring more people here and then provide more good paying jobs. So I, I think we're talking about the same letter. I might have misspoke when I said doing business.
Okay, thank you.
Um, are there other areas where y- you might differ from the incumbent? Where, um, I mean, we talked about the, the union project and, um, a- are there o- other areas where you might have voted differently than, than he did? That sort of would represent uh, a kind of a, a, a new spin on, on leadership for, for your ward?
I think, um, and I've, I've never met Danny uh, personally. Um, I, I, I think the big difference that, that we're, we're, we're getting is I want to talk to people before I make my decision. Um, I want to talk to the voters. In fact, on the flyer, I'm giving out my cell phone numbers on it now, so that's gonna be out there. Uh, after if, if and when I win. Um, so I want people to actually talk to me about the decisions I'm making. And when I'm talking to these people, I hear, oh, well, you know, I, I don't really know, uh, you know, what he's done. Uh, and in addition, I talk to people, they don't even know what ward they live in. Um, so really, it's just a lot of education we need to do and make sure that what I'm voting for is what my voters want me to vote for and not something that's in my, my best interest. Because I really want to be an elected official for the people of my ward in the city.
That, that's kind of a, kind of the age-old question that, that I like to talk about when we talk with elected officials, you know? Um, and, and I think there's, uh, you know, it, there, it's not a gotcha because I'm not sure what the right answer is. But, um, you know, to what, how do you balance? When do you do with the constituents, you know, if you hear from a lot of constituents and they feel one way? Um, and, and maybe in your heart of hearts, you don't think that's the right way. You know, when, when do you weigh that constituent input and, and do what they want? And when do you, you know, use your, you know, your own skills and experience uh, to reach that conclusion?
That, that's a, you're the first person that's asked me that question. That's a good question. I, I'm, I'm truly being uh, elected to represent what my people want, what the voters want. So I want to weigh all their opinions, but at the end of the day, uh, you know, the decision is, is mine on what I think's best for the ward and the city. Um, so I think, I think it's really just collecting as much input as I can get before I make a decision and hope that the decision I make is the best for the, the future of the city. Um, because I'm not thinking about just four years, I'm thinking about thirty years. Um, and, and what, you know, uh, my, my future kids are gonna want in the city and how I can help uh, produce that.
Do you have a, um, a thought in mind as far as how you might go about soliciting? I mean, h- having your, you know, certainly co- all the council members have their cell phone numbers um, available and email. Is, is there, you know, and, and you, you know who, who calls, it's the, it's the squeaky wheels often. Um, do you have uh, thoughts about how you might get, get a broader sense of um, how constituents feel about a given issue?
Yeah, I've had, uh, just from the campaigning aspect, I've had good luck using Facebook. Um, so I think using social media um, to ask people to fill out a simple poll, you know, put a question out there that could the city Dubuque give an additional one point six million dollars to the airline? Yes or no, and give them the option to give a comment. And, and hope that I can do something with, with social media or an email campaign uh, to get that survey out to people and actually have it filled out. Because I think, and you see this in any business, you send a survey out and then you get a one percent response ratio. Um, but really, how can I get people to provide the input is, is a question I need to figure out. But I think social media right now is a phenomenal route for that.
Okay. Uh, o- o- other questions for, for Matt from my colleagues here?
Amy, you had asked about looking back at previous um, goals and, and the, the status of achievement or not of those goals. Matt, ain't, they just, the, the city just released, they did their strategic planning here and came up with uh, fifteen goals. I think there's maybe eight top and, and seven important or vice versa. Any of those goals that you think are especially important or that you don't think are important going forward?
Yeah, so we've obviously already talked about air service. Um, that was one of them. We've talked, I bruisy talked about the sports complex. I think those are obviously two things people have passionate opinions about in Dubuque. Uh, obviously, uh, you know, fire station and, and location and staffing. Uh, it could be probably number one, public safety, you know, fire and police. Uh, for any, for any municipality, it should be the number one issue. Um, you know, we have on average two people per truck, national uh, uh, a- average should be four. Um, I, I'm sure it's very hard to, to uh, hire, you know, for, for fire and police. In fact, I know it is. Uh, so I'm not saying they're not trying, uh, but that should be, you know, number one, um, uh, on the list, in my opinion. Um, and then after that, I think we need to uh, worry about the, the infrastructure, so sewers, streets and parks. Um, because that's what people use every day, whether they realize it or not. The sewer is probably one of the most important uh, infrastructure items that the city uh, provides. Um, and then I think everything else on that list, a- a- again, the issue with my goals are there's no uh, you know, uh, smart type goals behind them that, that show how they're gonna do it, what, what actually is measurable to say this was done? Is it providing a report or is it actually building a sports complex? Because everyone knows they're not building a sport complex in twelve months. Uh, so what does that goal actually mean and how are they gonna achieve that subset of that, uh, you know, that goal?
And if you were on council, would you then insist that uh, when those goals are announced, that those, those priorities that they be um, smart with specific measurable at the time that they're released, uh, after, after the strategic planning?
Absolutely. I think uh, in, in my experience, again, I've, I've worked for three companies, you know, one through acquisition. Uh, you, you, a go- a goal without any measurables behind it is just a theme. And we really need true goals and how we measure that it was done. Uh, if I were to go back for the last couple of years and look at all the goals that they were set, it would just be interesting to see if they've changed the process at all. Um, but I, I don't think they have. Uh, at least year over year from last year, it's what they want to do, it's a good wish list, it's great things they want to do. But how do I know those things are actually done? That's the answer I don't have.
And go ahead, Ally.
One, this is sort of a different question, if you were gonna ask something somewhere. One, one thing that, you know, I hear a lot about is uh, just in, in interactions with readers and uh, I, I monitor our social media pages and, and reader comments and things like that. And one thing that gets, that gets a lot of talk is about, um, you know, the city's, the, you know, taxes and the city's budgets. You know, you know, what, what's my tax rate gonna be like? How, do we feel like the city is spending its money effectively? Um, and I know that's kind of a, a big broad question, but I am curious from, you know, from an outsider's perspective. Uh, do you see that, that the city is spending our tax dollars effectively, efficiently? You know, as far as balancing some of those big, big needs, things that'll be economic development as well as uh, you know, trying to get our, the best bang for our buck with what we have?
Yeah, so the number one role the city council and city manager has is the fiduciary responsibility to spend the tax dollars, you know, as, a- a- as needed and, and as the taxpayers want. Obviously, that's not always, you know, the easiest thing to do. Um, I think we have a lot of wasteful spending. We spend a lot of money on outside consultants. We have great staff at the city uh, that I think can do a lot of the work we bring in third-party consultants to do. Um, you know, we have a five flag center that people love, but it's budgeted to lose a million plus a year. Uh, you know, what can we do to turn that into a profit center for, uh, for the city? Um, there, there's gotta be some sort of, um, there's gotta be something we can do uh, to make the five flag center uh, profitable or at least break even for the city, so it's not costing us a million dollars. So I think we have a lot of wasteful spending. Um, and really, that's, that's the number one goal when I get in there with my finance and accounting background is to look at all of that and figure out what can be cut um, without, with, with providing the same level of service that the, the Dubuqueers are used to from the city.
Do you have any thoughts on how Five Flags can be turned into a break even or profitable entity?
I, I probably.
I'm sure they'd love to hear them.
I probably shouldn't have brought that up because uh, qu- quite honestly, I think that's a hard one to do. Um, a- a- and really, we just need to figure out a way to get more people to come. I think, I think that's what it's gonna end up to be. Uh, I also, it may not be big enough for some of the uh, big name um, uh, performers to come. And, and we need to figure that out. There, I've heard some good ideas. Uh, but a, a lot of them are more wish list items on, and how we do it. Uh, a lot of people say you should just sell it, uh, but, but that would be hard and, and I think it's like a great asset for the city. Um, so no, I don't have a good answer on how we can do that. But I know the, the uh, governmental um, assets that we have that lose uh, money each year is gonna be one, my number one priority.
Uh, Matt, we'll, we'll wrap up here. Uh, I told you, we keep you about forty-five minutes. So, um, I guess uh, one, one thing I, I would ask is, um, you know, were you to be elected? What do you think would be the most difficult part of, of serving in that, in the role of city council member for you personally? What, what would be the biggest challenge that, that would come with the multitude of headaches that go with city council?
Yeah, I, I think uh, that's a very good question. Uh, I think it's gonna be a learning uh, experience for me. I've obviously never sat on city council. Um, I think uh, you know, number one is I'm gonna have to devote as much time as I possibly can, especially at the beginning. Um, which I'm already devoting a lot of time to the campaign, so I don't think that should be a major issue. Um, but really, it's gonna be learning, because I've never run a government. I've never, you know, been up there. And I want to make sure that I learn everything possible about the historic governance of the city um, and how other cities run a- and, and how city councils work. So really, for me, it's gonna be, you know, hopefully the first three months, learning everything I possibly can about the history of the city Dubuque in and out, and then figuring out how other cities of similar sizes, whether in Iowa or different states uh, run, so we can figure out what we need to do better and what we, what we need to do better and what we already do great.
Okay, great. Well, Matt, we really appreciate you, your time today. Um, happy to meet with you and uh, wish you luck the rest of the way.
Yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate everyone's time. Excited uh, to continue.
All right.
Thank you. Bye.